Welcome off to a few minutes today, we're off. Welcome. Nox Bus 33, we're Fiat. And this is gonna be good. We should be there on time still, despite the late runner. It's got a 6-speed manual gearbox this has. I think one of my 33 videos last time I had a bit of issues. If it was at the moment, it's sunny and... But I'm on the backseat today as well, so... All the better, all the more better for us. I gather these aren't used on the first free that much on the weekday, sent to prefer the City Einmerks and Mellers. Wouldn't have needed, I'll say prefer, but I know there's a City Einmerk on today as they often is at times. So yes, so... Nice music. Hope it's not too loud, but it shouldn't be. Oh, what an exo-ian! Up there. Possibly another one, not too sure about the second one. It's not too a thrill about the second human, I'm afraid. I'm great! That's how you end the park, I must admit. You're on the bumpy side of things, but I only mean if I should be told. Meller, City Ein, yeah, you name it. I think there's some Scottmere barn doors on this. Does it work? Oh, what, Radio 2 running? Aren't the parts got different seats towards the front left? I like that. I think it's Vernon Kay on Radio 2. This is coming for an E-Connect today. I'm guessing, I haven't seen it yet, but I'm... But I'm guessing there's gonna be only one in operation today, if this is believed to be correct. Yeah, you can keep an eye on it now, I guess. Oh. Right, I think my last four videos on that shit is particular Fiat as well, actually. I think it was, seem to remember. I'm amazed that we can see some Fiat's on here now, since the... It's amazing that we can see Fiat's on here. Especially since the acting of the, or through West Richard's that we're going. But you have to consider, no? The fact that, you know, that such a unusual city, like, was just put on the run by Fiat's. Every weekday and Saturday before the Osos On Demand came in, so... I love the sound of this gearbox. I love it. Brilliant. Get the camera through, there we are, zoom out, that's better. That's better. No USBs on this one. Well, careful though, training bus. Ooh, ran us close. We just got, eh, escaped. Can't believe these minibus are so fast. They do not hang about. No matter whether manual or automatic, they do not hang about, I tell ya. Always a bit tricky around this bend, I'm afraid. It happens, so it is what it is. So, you know. Gonna zoom in for a minute. Mainly because the depot's gonna be gone else. Not much here, though. I can't hear it's probably down there. Flouses. The sun is completely in the wrong place for me. But it's the earth that's moving, not the sun, those of you wondering. It's all a bit different. The sun always stays still when you think it moves, but actually, I tell you what. It's the earth that moves. And it rotates around the sun, from what I remember. Outside, door opening. Outside, door closing. Didn't have the voice there. Here we go. Hear the indicator, if you listen carefully. I'm interested to know what this Verti3 is going to do today. I reckon it's going to... Actually, I've no idea, honestly. I honestly have no idea what it will do. They can't be anything at all, huh? Music wise. I often tend to find that some Verti3s take the straight on, but some take the left turn, but this is taking the standard left. Can often depend on what kind of bus it is. We've got left today. Some Verti3s are known for taking straight off, I... It must be said, bypassing some of these stops along the way. I tell you what, if the City Einmerk's gonna be bumpy on the return, then this is probably gonna come close to it on the way. This is a Nox Bus E-Connect route. But we'll see, but we'll see, it's not, this one's not an E-Connect service. Supposed to be, but... Maybe there's some E-Connects that are probably dead. Might be what it is. It's the ceiling which is nice. Got the carboned ceiling on these, I've really dived some of them, I don't know. Okay. Ah! Whoops! Ah! Bit of a slight smash on there. Looked like an accident to me. A load of crows in there, maybe a few pigeons as well, and that might as well, but a lot of crows in the field. And they're all having a fire, aren't they? Big accident, quite a, there's only a single vehicle accident, I think, for what it's worth, so I don't know what happened there. The road's open. Possibly until recovery comes. So it may be temporarily stopped traffic later. Fiat from Retford coming through ambulance. Here we go, we've given green. So... Oh, there's a helicopter! Tolleton one. We're in the right area for helicopters as well, those of us saying, hey... And see, it's not hanging about this Fiat. And the reason why I do only 5105 on uploads on this day is because we've got the, because the Mellers are good enough on the Verti3 as it is overall. Or the buses are, mini buses are there, for the good of that, because there's a City Einmerk as well, and there, there's this as well, and City Einmerk, I'm happy with just those. To do it on their own, if you like. To do business too, in terms of the mini buses today. So I don't need the 5105 then. For this bend. Okay, as we approach at Gammston Morrison's this morning. Maybe a bit on the late running side of things. We find a 6. Which 433 is running. I think the car wash is broken. At the moment. The, uh, this petrol station, anyway, this Morrison's petrol station. That wasn't broken. I reckon we could have easily just gone left at the roundabout there, but there you go. So skipping what would have been the Morrison's stop there. This is gonna be a tricky junction to get round in the moment. Because we have to go onto the Jural Carriageway, so this is gonna be quite tricky. Well, there goes the 6, 433. R90 Buzz gone, coming through as well now, look. This is gonna be tricky. How it'll look like. There's a gap, there's a nice gap developing. Could take this one, yes! Got there. Well, that's fine. If we can just get the right turn on to Tolleton name, it should be okay. The, uh, just this tricky one left now, we have. There we go, should take that. And all those. And the plane as well. Nice good stretch for a manual gearbox on these fast roads. And see, it's really going like a clacker's. It's also got the, well, I'll hop through you later, while we make another stop. Would be the best there. But it does have a green clock, I know that, of course. I guess a chance here, one sec. And you'll see it yourself. Yep, there we go, green clock, green clock on the front. As you can see. Sorry about the shaky camera, I've put a little bit of a man there. Starting getting a nice side view. Door! There it goes. Single sliding door, being a Meller. Whilst I was on 611 on 701 Radio 1, I did see something white on the Verti3 and it was this. Oh, it wasn't bottom, was it? Also lots of On Demand branded in a couple of buses' time after this one. And if this is a Belton, then that surely will be as well, ooh! About 30 miles an hour we go. Oh, look at that, all locked up, I wasn't being carried by yet. Cockrave now, ooh! Saying slow down. I think we are about to. Takes some different routes around Cockrave here. I'm also expecting there to be a Nox Bus E-Connect to pass by on the first free shortly. Which should be worked by either a 71 plate or one of the 5105 Leven rounded. Although the very heart of what it's stick about, there could be any one of them, doesn't know how they wanna go about it. Probably a 71 plate, I'd say. We'll wait and see, because I did see it was, there was an 18 plate, so it could be one of those, it might not be. I think often, I don't really think, but... The pause. Nice doggy. Be careful. That's fine. I think there's a Nox Bus on the garden zone as well. Here we go. We're gonna take the square left here now. There we are. Just a long way round the Cockrave, isn't it? Hopefully we pass the death sentence soon, anyways. Okay, then we've got this junction left, on to Woodview. Although we've got a, uh, got a coach here. Oh no, more temporary traffic lights. Oh, they're revamping it. I don't know if it's open as usual or not, but looks like they're doing some scaffolding. Well, there are temporary lights, but not in operation at the moment. As it were, so... That can just, that would just fake while we're just through the lights. Strange, unless they're not working, when they're supposed to be. I think what it is worth, we are still through the lights, so... We can still take it. At this point last time, they passed YYD on 33, but I'm expecting an E-Connect to come through shortly. So... As to what that's going to be, I don't know, so... I mean, the way I've seen it, couldn't be anything, because of... I mean, the way I've seen it couldn't be anything because it tends to take anything on the just one on button today, so. A fridge, so. Could be anything from these things. I just have no idea what's going to be. It's gonna be either F J X or Z of this Econnect. Well, they're not C X lately, so it won't be that. I don't think it'll be that. It's gonna be Z F or J. Runs it. Just wait and see when it turns up. Ooh. Ooh, oh hello. Is this the five ten five eleven coming through? I believe it is. Yep. Zed. Trust me. So it's a five ten five eleven branded. That's running it. Well, I got the city line Merc after this. They'd be more important thirty three. So that's in January gone. We've got the junction left now. That's interesting lineup on the thirty three we've got today. No Meller Merks. So you've got a five ten five eleven branded Econnect on the thirty three, a Fugue Cato and a City Line Merc. That's an interesting little lineup, I think. Perfect. Why me, I didn't? That was a nice thirty three that was that went through. I like that one. The thirty three is just now a namesman today. But it's gonna get better when I do the mini bus. They're more important, aren't they? We're not off the end point. There's pile on again. Let's see. This is the eight forty six we're going under. No ambulance broken down there. That's unusual. Broken down ambulance. Whee. This is fun. I say we'll leave North End when I get the City Line Merc. That is gonna be really good. Ready to pass up. Lots of on demand I go off the gas. Today's one bit of one of the great days. Two mini buses have turned up on the thirty three. On the free out of two, two mini buses over. But none of them have been Mellers whatsoever. I'm a pro, I'm a big Meller. Well, Meller Merks, that's all. That's what we want to say. You're forgetting the struts of the Mellers. Oh, yes. Yes. On trial again. Go. Need a swamp here. So it's the eight thirty three still run by Central Connect. Oh, no, that's Centre Bus now, isn't it? Yeah, it is. Right. Good. No more falling heavy items at last. Bonus cab view. Now you can see the clock and all its glory. So the then return I'm gonna have is going to be with the Merc. The Merc's running on the mini bus board today. This one's coming for an Econnect on this board. That's why the Simpsons should live on Simpson Drive. Forget Springfield, Simpson Drive. Yeah, that's the one. The end. Simpson Drive for the Simpsons. Now here's the fast one. Always respect the speed limit now. From the thirty zones, here we go. Hey. Take us right. Not far from there. It's a snake film. It's going to be the eight forty six shortly, actually. There we go. There comes another fast one. Here we go. This is the one on the thirty three. Especially on the mini bus like this. They just give it the biggest. Down there. Eight forty six approaching. Nice blue lights up there. I like that. Okay. Is it left turn? Wouldn't last for the next round, but. Hurry up. Oh, we take the Seaford off once in a row, right quick. Eight forty six. Cool. Not walking journeys in, no, I guess. Slow children. There says access to eight forty six. Roscoe's Borough Zone still. My next video is actually taking me the, uh, long way. Which is the thirty three again. Let me see. Oh. Easy now, aren't we? That's probably why it is. Right, left, right, left. Right, left. But that's mainly right as we're going back, but. For a bus that's big. Oh gosh. Uh, that's quite a muddy road there. Only got a road sweeper out there as well. Do you have a bit of water logging, but you know, here's what it is. This time of year. That one isn't marinating. Okay, we are now near Radcliffe, so what we're gonna do is we're now going to do the opposite of what is normally done in an aircraft. Where we usually pass the Seaford with a nice preparation landing. This time what we're gonna do here is do the complete opposite. And that is. And that is going to be, if I look it now, going to undo the belts in preparation for arrival at Radcliffe. There we go. Also gives us a chance to gives me a chance to see this. Four point wheel test cumin system. I like these paddles. So we're near Radcliffe and I'm gonna be here for a bit. So I wait for the, uh, so I've got to wait for the City Line Merc to pick me up. Which is on the service, the eleven forty seven service, I think, from here. If memory serves me right. I don't know which one here's our back in the head, but it is a, uh, it is then a, uh, City Line Merc on the next one. So as soon as we, um, come towards the end, I'm gonna find a belt to push. I don't know what these are for though. About this main line through. Careful me. Almost there. We're at terminus point. These things are very sharp, by the way. The barn doors. Very small. I know there's theatres with flat rears, but they'd never be on the thirty three and won't ever be. Man, it goes. Old glass. Original glass then. So. Quite different seats that they have. These seat belts by it do technically come smooth. So if I want more since I see my start, I'm gonna get the better push. And end it. Hello. There we are, I think it's this one. It certainly is. Both of them. Why don't we? What's the door? There we go, we'll see you in the next one.